Good evening, everybody. I apologize for the technical difficulties. We are ready to begin, correct? My mask is right here. I'm speaking into the thing. I'm six feet away, so I'm not speaking. Sorry if someone just told me to put a mask on, but we are socially distant and I need to have speaking, so I'm not going to wear it. The Runnymede Board of Education meeting is called to order. The Board of Education is in compliance with Chapter 231 of the Public Law of 1975 entitled "The Open Public Meeting Act." The time, date, and location of this meeting was appropriately advertised by notifying the retrospect as well as closing notices in Borough Hall, Runnymede Post Office, Maryville School, Align Bingham School, Grace Downing School, and the Runnymede Public School District website. At this time, we are going to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, board members.
Ms. Adair. Ms. Beebe. Mr. Buckheim. Ms. Davidson. Mr. Lego. Mr. Murray. Ms. Panzarella. Ms. Sams. Ms. Spalding.
Just, I'm gonna repeat a lot this evening in case you kept none. Here, so all members of the Board of Education are present. Also present, Mark Iannucci, Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Sean McCarron, this is Administrator and Director of Curriculum Instruction. I believe remotely we have Ms. Jane Yezzi, Mr. Steve Tealy, Mr. Steve Maloney, Mrs. Lotta Subber, and Mr. Frank Heim. At this time, I need approval of minutes for the regular and executive meeting of July 21st, 2020. Motion made by Maria, seconded by Patty. Any questions? Roll call.
Ms. Adair. Ms. Beebe. Mr. Buckheim. Ms. Davidson. Mr. Lego. Mr. Murray. Ms. Panzarella. Ms. Sams. Ms. Spalding. Motion passes.
At this time, we have a presentation for our 2021 goal setting. Mr. Iannucci, got you?
Good evening, everybody. It's gonna be a little bit difficult. If everybody can hear me here. I gave you copies of the district goals, the superintendent goals, and as well as the board goals. I don't know if you want to start with that. You want to start with these district goals? You want to read each one? You have a little opportunity to take a look at them. We've broken up the school goals in the three areas, in the three committees we formed this summer for the restart plan. They were based on educational health, emotional health, and physical health. The superintendent goals also kind of tie me down as well. So there's kind of a lot to look at there. I'm not gonna read every bullet for you, but I am, but I'm just gonna read the tasks, excuse me, underneath each headline of what we're looking for. For educational health, we're gonna create an environment of learning that translates to both physical and virtual environments, fostering student growth and achievement. And I've holded, we've holded some of those things for you. Emotional health, identify ways to effectively re-engage students, support adults, and cultivate a positive climate for academic learning. And then, physical health, assess the physical facility used by students and staff, develop an environment conducive to the learning and growth while encompassing the health and safety of everyone involved. Shifting over to superintendent goals, I have three as well, conditions for learning. Superintendent will establish an action plan addressing areas of need or lack of anticipated standards, and restart recovery plans to address students and educators' basic physical safety needs. Performance Goal Two is social and emotional learning. The superintendent will direct the learning of social and emotional competence as critical components for each child's educational program, as well as addressing staff and community SEL needs. And then, Performance Goal Three, continuity of learning, the superintendent will determine what instructional delivery model will be needed to include timeframes for each course, subject, grade, appropriate workload, and essential standards for students to learn. Now, in the past, last year, I did our goals in July. Our meeting was a little different in July. We've already started working with some of these things earlier in the months or something, excuse me, earlier in the summer. So some of these things, you know, we've already kind of accomplished a couple of them as far as some of the bullet points. We're gonna continue to work on them as well. Ready for questions? Yes, Mr. Buckheim?
Your first one, number three?
Yes.
... provide access to technology, technical training, and parents' care. No questions? How are we going to train parents and caregivers?
We have some opportunities set up coming up, sorry. To do some trains for parents online, some things that, yes, SEL components they can work with, with their children as well as themselves.
So just to repeat that question, I probably wanted to go ahead and hear, describing to one of his goals, that he was gonna provide access to technology, technical training, teaching students, and parents and caregivers, and Mr. Buckheim wants to know how he was going to train parents and caregivers. That was the question.
Did anyone else follow into the question area? Do the Q and A.
So, no, I just wanted to repeat the questions so everyone could hear what the other board members were saying. Any other questions on school district goals or superintendent goals? No? So then, on the back of the agenda, that is the board goals. And I'll read those, if you don't mind. Goal number one was communication. The Board would promote effective communication and involvement between school board, administration, and the community. And we have five, excuse me, six different bullets where we want boards to meetings to be held at various schools, attend functions throughout the school year, invite stakeholders in the community to board meetings, and utilize social media to deliver accurate information to all the stakeholders. Goal number two is board member education. Each board member will take initiative to participate in various board responsibilities. And we thought that it would be fair to say to obviously complete the required annual governance training, to evaluate the superintendent promptly each year, which I'm happy to say we have done the past few years for TSAC reasons. That's a good thing for the district, and to earn a minimum of five New Jersey School Board continuing education credits annually, which is not difficult because, like I said last, last meeting, and I sent you guys an email, the School Board Association has a lot of wonderful things online. And if you can't make it, they will record it, and you can get credit for it. So I highly recommend you look at that. Does anybody have any issues with one or two? Day three is safety and security, to promote the safety and security of those staff and students, and continue to assess and update our district's safety and security for all facilities, develop all key responders on planning and implementing security drills. I'd like to thank Officer Mary for helping us with that all the time. Have administrative team provide three safety and security updates during the school year for October, January, and April, and support any measures that the chief school administrator and team deem necessary in an effort to provide a safe and healthy learning working environment, even during the pandemic. Anybody have any issues there? No? Okay, so now what? So we have, is this on the agenda to approve later on? The goals? We did not? So, other policy and public relations. We have two, some policies for first reading, policy for second reading, that's one and two. Three is to approve paid holidays for facility maintenance. So four. Unless any, no one has any issues, questions, concerns, anything they want to add, delete? Speak now. Now's your time. No? Okay, so we will approve, I'm gonna put number four. Are you ready, Dr. McCarron? Approve 2020, 2021 board, school district, and superintendent goals as number four. Is that good? Everyone got that? Okay. Do you have anything else you need to add at this time? The signing chain will be up. All right. Anyone else about goals before we move on? Okay, under correspondence, we have received yesterday the email and forwarded today to the board member of the letter from the Runnymede Education Association. So I would like to publicly recognize and thank all of our Runnymede staff members for everything they do in our community and schools. We will continue to stay current with the ever-changing state of our educational system and always take steps to keep our students and staff safe. Please, please know that your feedback is always appreciated and welcome. While at this moment, we have a plan in place to return, we are all very aware it can change at a moment's notice. We are willing to hold an emergency meeting at any time if that need arrives. So we wanted to thank you publicly for your letter and your concern. At this time, does anybody have any public comment on agenda items only? If you could please, like, raise your hand like this. It was Dr. McCarron. It's you. Again, this is public comment on agenda items only.
Comment, I just asked that you unmute yourself.
Okay, so if there's no public comment at this time, then we will... Oh, sorry.
All right. Mary Moore?
I don't see that. Where do you see that?
Hi, Mary. You're unmuted. We can hear you. Teedalk? Is your volume down? I can't hear you. You are unmuted. Hold on. I'm trying to look for it. I apologize. We have 99 people, so I'm going through.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah. Please say your name and your address before answering the question. You don't have to say your address. You can just say your opposition if you want.
Mary Moore, Four Chateau Circle, Laurelton, New Jersey, 08053. I'm J E A member, R E A member, Runnymede District employee.
You can answer your question.
Okay, I'm not actually asking a question. I'm just making a statement on behalf of myself, my family, and many of the R E A members that have come out today to the board meeting to just make a statement silently but lovingly that we are all, or many of us, a large percentage of our R E A has significant health concerns for showing up to any in-person instruction. We are not 100% positive that the road back guidelines have been followed due to the fact that the majority of us are at home and not participating in the plan back plans, which makes it very hard for us all to determine if we're walking into an environment that is truly safe. And that has a burden for many of us to bear, considering that we are living with sick people in our families possibly, older family members, pregnant people, along with people that are immunocompromised. So, not 100% of the staff is walking through the doors, feeling comfortable teaching, and feeling on their A-game where they can focus and provide the 100% instruction that we at all times try to provide to our children in class. So I wanted to take this opportunity to just say that it's much wonderful things that all of you on the board do provide to us. We are here, standing strong, with fear.
We appreciate that, Mrs. Moore, and I don't want to, your feedback and your comments are always welcome at any time. This point in time at the meeting, there's another public comment at the end. All of us can hear you. I just want to let you know that all members of the board can hear every word that you're saying loud and clear. We appreciate your concern and always welcome your input and your feedback. But at this time, it's only for things that are on the agenda, and our plan is not on the agenda at this time. So you can, you and other members can speak later at the other part. But right now, it's for agenda items only. But we hear you. We appreciate your concern, and we thank you.
Thank you too. We really do appreciate it. And us as a community outside felt that that was our time to speak up. And I apologize, and we apologize if it was out of turn.
You're not out of turn because you don't need apology.
Thank you, Mrs. Spalding. Appreciate it.
So now, we're gonna, does anyone have any public comment on agenda items at this time? Anything that's on the agenda that's going to be voted for this evening? I didn't see, just so you know, I didn't see Mrs. Moore, so I'm gonna ask that you guys help me with that, okay? Like, I didn't see your hand.
There's nine pages.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry for those of you, there's nine pages, so I'm not scrolling through, so I'm asking the administrative team to help me out. But if there's no one speaking up now, then we're gonna move on with the meeting, and there'll be another time for public comment at the end. I think we're good. All right. So we are, I'm gonna send this over to Mr. Iannucci. We're giving due support.
Sure. Tell myself a little bit. Thank you again. Just a couple of updates since our July meeting, the United went out. On August 3rd, the reopening document, the checklist for reopening for schools came out. That was the Assistant Development Review of Schools Reopening Plans. That checklist represents the anticipated minimum standards detailed with DOE's road back and the restart recovery plan. I guess, I think I did send you that information in a document in the weekly update. Also, on August 3rd, the DOE revised the anticipated minimum standard regarding use of face coverings that require all students to wear face coverings except when doing so to inhibit the individual's health, with the exceptions that are listed in that document. I believe I sent you that as well. And then, on August 13th, which was last week, the New Jersey Department of Health released their COVID public health recommendations for local health departments. And that guidance also documents public health recommendations for school settings. I will send you that this week, because I know I didn't get updated.
I'm sorry. Dr. McCarron, I can't get this to you. You couldn't hear. I'm sorry. Oh, okay. Okay, okay. I'll, 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 I'll repeat it.
With the other questions. And finally, I just have a statement to share with everybody in the audience today. Obviously, as we progress through this uncertain surrounding, uncertain surrounding this pandemic and the impact it has had on our lives, Paul is gonna be working very hard to make sure that the Runnymede schools provide a safe learning environment for our students and staff as we possibly can, with the guidance requirements set forth by the state, health, and education departments. The number of people and hours spent in development and information of this plan at an early level at times will continue over the next several weeks, leading up to the opening of schools. On the restart recovery plans highlight, it is not limited to development of policies and procedures for screening students, staff, visitors as they enter the buildings, development of procedures for social distancing in school buildings where appropriate, the development of cleaning, policies and procedures for wearing face coverings, and development of schedules to accommodate structural opportunities. We have worked with families to make reasonable accommodations when we can, and respectful whatever learning options they choose. We are aware that our plan is not perfect for everyone's daily schedule and routine. We are aware that families and staff have questions and concerns ranging from how students enter the school, to what a question will be, to how we notify families if a student or staff are test positive or has been exposed to someone who is positive. We can assure you those questions will be answered in the weeks to come, as this plan is fluid and seems to change on a daily basis. We understand stress that our plan can change overnight and will impact all our families. As a father or teaching school's children, I can share, I share your questions and concerns. As somebody who lost a parent because of this virus, I share your feelings of how impactful this virus can be. So I ask that, as far as that, we continue to respectfully work together for our students, our staff, and all our families as it challenges this school and our home. Thank you.
I just want to turn it up now.
Dr. McCarron, do you have a report at this time?
At this time, I'm simply working on preparations for the start of the school year. We have two audits currently going on. All that has been going well. And then, just continually following updates that we're getting from the state to ensure that we are good for opening and that any necessary changes that need to be made are made at that time.
Any questions from Mr. Iannucci to your Dr. McCarron? Any, all other district reports will resume in September. Does anyone have any other reports? Okay.
... services pitches, and, you know, our video has been approved for new regulations to begin offering of assistance to school districts as parents and parents and caregivers. And it also approved the making of the, I guess, the center, federal health initiative esports competitions, and, yeah, we, now, social effects. Privacy, if there are districts that are still having difficulty with internet access, if the district has everything, like, things out of system, that the school would go through that, if you could give that one more.
So I'm just gonna repeat what Mr. Buckheim said. Mr. Buckheim is our representative for the Camden County Educational Services Commission, and he went to the meeting on August 5th. And here are some of the things that they talked about there, that they have mental health assistancies. They are going to be the center to initiate esports competition in the county, and that the Camden County Educational Services Commission also can help districts if they're still having difficulty with internet access or Wi-Fi, correct? So that's what they talked about at the August Camden County Educational Services Commission. Meeting. Anyone else have anything to add? Okay, so at this time, there's no other reports. Any other unfinished business? Okay, then we will go on to new business. Everybody ready? At this time, I need a motion to approve under property and transportation, item number one. Looks like the travel locker, R Y A, for, is going to use our field outside only. They will not have access to our building, correct? Okay. I need a motion for our number one, facilities. Motion made by Chad. Seconded by Dennis. Any questions? Roll call.
Ms. Adair. Ms. Beebe. Mr. Buckheim. Ms. Davidson. Mr. Lego. Mr. Murray. Ms. Panzarella. Ms. Sams. Ms. Spalding.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Under personnel, I need a motion to approve items numbers one to 11. Motion made by Dennis. Seconded by Naomi. Any questions? Roll call.
Ms. Adair. Ms. Beebe. Mr. Buckheim. Ms. Davidson. Mr. Lego. Mr. Murray. Ms. Panzarella. Ms. Sams. Ms. Spalding.
Yeah. Under personnel, I need a motion to approve items numbers one. One through 10, please. Motion made by Maria. Seconded by Angel. Sorry, Dan, I'm gonna go first. Any questions there? Roll, roll call.
Ms. Adair. Ms. Beebe. Mr. Buckheim. Ms. Davidson. Mr. Lego. Mr. Murray. Ms. Panzarella. Ms. Sams. Ms. Spalding.
Yeah. Under curriculum, I need a motion to approve items numbers one to three. Motion made by Chad. Seconded by Patty. Any questions? Roll call.
Ms. Adair. Ms. Beebe. Mr. Buckheim. Ms. Davidson. Mr. Lego. Mr. Murray. Ms. Panzarella. Ms. Sams. Ms. Spalding.
Under policy and public relations, this is amended. Remember, we are approving items numbers one through four. Motion made by Maria. Seconded by Patty. Any questions? Roll call.
Ms. Adair. Ms. Beebe. Mr. Buckheim. Ms. Davidson. Mr. Lego. Mr. Murray. Ms. Panzarella. Ms. Sams. Ms. Spalding. Before we move on, Ms. Spalding, I know under personnel, we did approve Haley Challenger as a long-term teacher for the 2021 school year. She was also a practicing student and did her student teaching at Bingham. So she'll now be joining the Bingham team. So, welcome Haley.
Welcome Haley to Runnymede.
I saw her on one of my search dreams. So I'm just, I hate that.
Sorry, Haley. We have ten pages of people to scroll through. We were not being rude. Welcome. At this time, we are now open for recognition of citizens and staff who may have any comment that they would like to say. On the agenda, I don't always read this, but for the sake of this time, I just want to let you know, I'm gonna read this this month, just so we can be clear about what, how public comments work. The public is reminded they should attempt to resolve any problems or complaints through initial contact with the staff member or members involved therein and the chief school administrator prior to petitioning the Board of Education. Complaints should only be brought to the board after the appropriate school has had a reasonable opportunity to resolve the problem at the employee level. Statements should be limited to three, in length of three minutes. The public is reminded that any public complaints against a district employee must be made through a specific grievance process, and the description of this process may be found in the Board of Ed Policy filed through 0167. This policy is available upon request of the Board in the office of the Board Secretary. And any individual naming an employee in a complaint before the Board of Education without the employee's permission could be cited for violating that employee's civil and contractual rights. So at this time, if you would like to unmute yourself, if you have a comment at this time. I'm gonna mute it. I heard a, I heard someone, but I did not, I don't know who it's, I say this, Ms. Engelhardt, is that you?
It is.
Hi.
Hi. Karen Engelhardt, Runnymede employee. I have a question regarding our air filters in our buildings.
So listen, I just want to let, you know, I'm not being rude, but I was told after I made a comment to Mrs. Moore that my entire board could not hear every word that she said. So I'm gonna actually repeat what you say, so my other board members can be here, yeah, okay?
You got it.
Just so, to be fair.
I'll slow down.
Because I'm the only one who's on the super meeting. So Ms. Engelhardt is a district employee, and her question was again?
I have a question about
Go ahead, because you repeated your question.
... filters in our building.
Air filters?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead. You can answer the question.
Union was given a response to some of our questions, that we only have MERV 8 filters. The CDC is recommending a minimum of MERV 14, which captures air droplets, and a preference would be MERV 14. And a preference would be MERV 17, which actually catches virus particles. Is there a plan to upgrade our filters and can our system handle that?
Okay, so her question was about the air filters and that the union was requesting information when they asked the admin, and they were told that there is a MERV 8 is what we use, and the CDC is recommending MERV 14 to 17? Correct me if I'm wrong. Is that right? So, Mr. Engelhardt wanted to know if there was a plan in place to upgrade the air filter system and if our current system can handle that, correct?
Correct.
I'm going to, um, revert that to the administrative team. Go ahead. Hold on. He's muted.
He's muted.
So Mr. Iain, you can ask him to help with, um, with, uh, for those of you who don't know. Those of you who are supervised, Mr. Ryan, Mr. Sar, supervisor of the building in Brown.
Frank, did you hear the question?
Hi Frank.
I heard the question.
Is it something I can get back to the, is it something I can get back to them on? Do you want me to answer right now?
Yeah, we're, we're in the process to some, looking at all that, and we can get back to them on that as soon as possible.
Okay.
And Karen, can you do me a favor and submit that question to me on an email so I have everything, so I'm not, when I jot stuff down, I didn't do something, is that okay?
I will do that. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other comments?
Julia Conti.
Hi Julia.
Hi. Um, I'm a parent of students in the Runnymede district. My address is 133 North Reed. Um, I do have a couple of questions. First, to piggyback on Ms. Engelhardt's question, will... I understand questions. Is that going to be made public to the parents as well as the teachers? So that was a concern of mine.
Yeah, I can, I can reach out to you, I can put something out there as well. Yes, the answer is yes, as soon as we get the information. So I'm just going to repeat your question to Ms. Conti. So she's a parent, and she was, has a few questions, and she piggybacked off what Ms. Engelhardt asked when they get that information and to compete, please be made public to the parents as well. So that was her first question. Okay, I'm just repeating so the board can hear and know what you're asking.
I can, okay. Okay, um, so the next question is, um, for the students, bathrooms. How often are they going to be cleaned? And is someone going to monitor how many kids will be in the bathroom at the, at a time?
So our next one, student bathroom, how often will they be cleaned? And are they going to be monitored, how many are going in?
There'll be a disaffected schedule for all bathrooms and high-touch areas. Um, they will work on Mr. Heiser building principles, so they will be cleaned thoroughly throughout the day. And what was the second part of the question?
Will they be like video monitored?
Yes, bathrooms will be monitored, and we will probably allow more than two students at a time in the day.
Okay, thank you. Um, water bottles. Will students be allowed to use water bottles in the classroom? Because there's not going to be any water fountains. And what is the policy going to be? As I understand, they're to be masked at all times except for like when they're eating lunch.
Yes, at this time, um, students will be able to bring water bottles. At this time, our water playstations will be available. Obviously, we'll use the regular traditional water fountains. And right now, we start the school year in September, students will be eating in the classroom. And then we're looking at some other options of other places they could eat as well. Um, if it's a nice day outside, we'll go out there as well. And then slowly, gradually, hopefully using, um, the cafeteria as we progress.
So I don't know, Julia, you're in the school building, but a lot of our water, yeah. We're collecting the easy, like when you have a school. They actually can refill water bottles. So we will be allowing water bottles. So, we will be allowing water bottles and they can spill that without touching anything. Like, things that have to be down. You drink bottled, has a lot on it, and I know that because I do. But the actual water fountain itself, before the refilling, but they actually, they have already needed more. They would refill that without touching anything. To refill their waters, to your children, right? Once they needed more water, they would refill that without touching anything, touchless. That is available at this time. This is not a situation.
Yes, okay.
Does that make sense?
I completely understand that. Um, and then I have a question about, um, on the slides that were sent out to the parents. Um, there's something like if the student has a runny nose, cough, um, vomiting, the fever. I understand like as a whole, the concern about them being COVID-related symptoms. My children, both of them, are chronic seasonal allergy sufferers, and a lot of the symptoms relate to that. When we took them to the pediatrician, the pediatrician wanted me to get clarification from the district and the board because of the second part of the slide that said, students will not be, should not return to the class until their symptoms are resolved. My kids' symptoms last from right about now, I'm starting them on the allergy meds, through the end of, uh, November. How is that going to cope for my kids being in school?
Obviously, we'll have screenings in place with our nurses, which is going to be at the beginning. And since, you know, we haven't started this process yet from day one, um, the screening process will be if the student's showing that the symptoms are entering, then our nurses will be screening them to determine whether or not it's code-related. You know, if it's an allergy type of issue.
As a parent, I would recommend making sure that your students' information for the nurse, whatever building they're in, is up to date, and the nurse is aware of meeting the point of writing and copying the principal. I would, I would, you, make sure that they know. I would, I would, you, suffer from seasonal allergies as well. That should be from all allergies as well. That's just from parent to parent, that's what I would do.
Oh, no, I totally understand that. My pediatrician's concern was the part where it said the students would not be able to return until their symptoms had resolved, meaning.
Right, because that means you're, 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 until the summer. I understand completely, I understand.
So what I'm going to ask is, when you said, when I correspond to you regarding your first question, I will have, uh, someone reach out to you in regards of your children so we can be on the same page with that.
Okay. Um, and then I have, I'm so sorry, I have so many questions. It's just a big deal for me to be sending my kids back to school in this environment with elderly parents that are also immunocompromised. I myself am immunocompromised, but I'm trying to do the best for my kids' emotional and mental well-being as well as their education. Um, which leads to one of my last questions is, if a student or teacher is COVID-positive, um, have, have you, we as a district come up with a plan? I understand the state has come up with a plan that they've released. Has the district come up with a plan to piggyback off of that regarding?
We're following guidelines stated by the local department of health in regards to notification and who to notify and who would need to be quarantined and all those different aspects of that.
Okay, so we'll follow the guidelines the state left it kind of fluid. If there's two to three kids in a building, the decision to close a portion of the building versus closing the entire building?
We're following the Camden County Department of Health guidelines.
Okay. And then if a student is sent home for symptoms and they're required to quarantine at home, how quickly will they be flipped over to remote learning?
Uh, right away, actually, if there's something like that. If a student is, say, has to quarantine for two weeks, they go right away to, uh, to remote.
Okay, thank you so much for your time.
You're welcome. Thank you for your question.
Ms. Engelhardt, is your hand raised to resume for another question, or was that from the first one?
Sorry, I forgot to put it down.
No worries.
Is there any other public comment at this time? I'm not seeing any other public comments. Okay, so the next, there's no need for executive session this evening. So the next regular education, Board of Education meeting is set for September 15th, and the time, the location is to determine. That will be at 7:00 PM. Unless, of course, my friends, there comes the need that we have to have an emergency meeting, then we will do so. So at this time, I need a motion to adjourn. Motion made by Maria. Seconded by Patty. All in favor? I have it. Meeting is adjourned. I'll leave it at seven forty-five.